This is five years. I just think this is a long time. Five years. We can say no, yeah, I agree, three years is gonna be long enough, don't you think? I just think we need to look more at building than going on five years sitting in a place.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the West Fargo City Commission Meeting for October third. Before we start, I'd ask everybody in the room to please silence their cell phones with the exception of emergency services. And I'd also make an announcement that Commissioner George will not be with us this evening, she's traveling on work, on work related. So with that, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda, Commissioners. It has been distributed.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, it's been moved that we approve the Order of the Agenda as presented, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second, it's been moved and second to approve the Order of the Agenda, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is to approve the amendments of September nineteenth. It has been distributed, it's on pages two through four in your packet.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, it's been moved to approve the minutes of September nineteenth as distributed, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second, it's been moved and second to approve those, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E is the building permits. The building permit report has been distributed, is on pages five through seven.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, Anderson, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, second, it's been moved and second to approve the building permits as distributed on pages five through nine in your packet. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is the consent agenda. We have items A through E, pages starting on page eight and ending on page forty-one.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, it's been moved to approve the consent agenda, items A through E as presented, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, we are now in the regular agenda. Item number one is the second reading and the final adoption of a zoning ordinance amendment allowing for campgrounds within an agricultural district. Mr. Aaron Nelson, Planning and Zoning Director, City of West Fargo, in your packet, it is on pages forty-two through sixty. Good evening, Mr. Nelson, and welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. So as was just mentioned, item one is a second reading and final consideration for a draft ordinance amendment intending to establish a process for allowing new campgrounds within the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. The presentation of this item, along with public hearing and first reading of the proposed ordinance took place September nineteenth, at which time the City Commission voted three to two in favor of the proposed draft. At that public hearing, there were two citizens that spoke in opposition to the proposal, as well as one, Mr. Cody Cashman, who spoke in favor of the proposal. It's my understanding there has been some additional feedback from the community since the November nineteenth meeting. The planning department staff has not received any additional correspondence on this item, however. Additionally, I'll note that there have been no changes to the proposed ordinance since the first reading, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Nelson? So a clarification for everyone that's in attendance this evening, this is regarding the ordinance. There is no proposal before the City Commission on a campground, anywhere within our community or within the extraterritorial. There is no proposal. The only thing that we're doing is trying to set up a city ordinance that would spell out the process that should one come forward, because there has been interest known to us, okay? So Commissioners, your thoughts?
I'll make the motion to approve second reading.
Is there a second? Is there a second? For the purpose of discussion, I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion fails due to a tie. Next order of business, moving on. So the second reading has failed. Moving on to item number two is a sanitary lift station rehabilitation. Create a project number thirteen forty-three, approve engineer's report, direct the engineer to prepare plans and specifications, and prepare a task order for basic services. Mr. Dan Hanson, City of West Fargo.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis, and Commissioners, in your packet is a summary sheet, if you recall. We've had a multi-year phased project where we're taking four lift stations per year, sanitary lift stations per year, and we're just upgrading them with regards to panels, fixing rusted-out infrastructure, and just getting those sanitary lift stations, which are very critical, some of the most critical pieces of our infrastructure, into better shape. We've had two projects that have been completed, thirteen thirty-eight and thirteen forty is in the final stages of completion. And what we're here tonight to do is to talk about and potentially get approval for to create project number thirteen forty-three, which would be the next four sanitary sewer lift stations, numbers SA two, three, twelve, and fifteen. There is an engineer's report in your packet that discusses the nature and scope of it. I could get into the specifics of any of the lift stations if you like, but I'm assuming that, like the other ones, the report would be made available if you want to get into some technical reading for that. We did have this identified in the 2022 CIP with a cost of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We do have, in our feasibility study and the technical report prepared by our consultant, an estimated cost of one point two million dollars. So we are on track with estimates of being in line with what we've presented in the past. So with that, I would entertain any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, questions? For the city engineer? What would be your approximate timeline on this, Mr. Hanson?
The act, the design, we would direct the engineer to prepare a task, a basic services task order, but typically they would begin the work on that design. We would look to be getting that design wrapped up by the end of the year, so that way we would be able to advertise likely in January and have a bid opening that we would potentially award bids in February would be my best guess.
So a technical question is, is this in the CIP for 2022 or 2023?
For 2023.
Excellent, all right, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sanitary lift station rehabilitation, SA two, three, twelve, and fifteen, create a project thirteen forty-three, to approve the engineer's report, direct an engineer, our engineer, to prepare plans and specifications, and prepare a task order for basic services. Pages sixty-one through sixty-eight in your packet. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, sir. Item number three is the North Dakota Department of Transportation Alternative Grant Application. It's an approved transportation alternative grant for, and provide letters of support for two projects, and your packet is on pages sixty-nine through eighty-three. Mr. Hanson, good evening.
Thank you again, Commissioner President Dardis, and Commissioners, in your packet is the applications that we would like to submit to secure TA grants, transportation alternative grants through the North Dakota Department of Transportation. These grants provide additional funding through grant programs for us to construct bike paths in Maucke, we used it for the Drain Forty-five Bike Path most recently. And there's actually two different ones that we would like to apply for, and for what we're doing tonight is just asking for the commission's agreeance to submit those applications to find out if we're able to be funded. The one application, actually, the Eaglewood Park to the Lights at Cheyenne Path, that was actually previously applied for in 2020, we were successful in obtaining that grant, but since then, however, they have lifted the cap, and there was a cap, a dollar amount that was capped with the previous grant submittal. So basically with that one, what we're looking at doing is just resubmitting that same grant application, saying, hey, we recognize that you don't have a cap anymore, we would like more money towards the project you've already funded. The intention would be to still proceed with the project at the currently funded amount, if we don't get it, but we would like to go back and ask for more money now that there isn't, isn't the cap. And the other project has been one that's been talked about for quite some time, and that's the Rivers Bend Path along Twenty-third Avenue. That is a new project application to connect the Cheyenne Street Bike Path to the Twenty-third Avenue Rivers Bend neighborhoods. This would actually include a pedestrian bridge crossing the Cheyenne River. And then the Metracog would be requested to fund the project at eighty percent grant money. So those are the two applications that we would like to submit. Again, after, by submitting these applications, we're not obligating the city towards anything, it's just submitting for the funding. However, obviously, if the funding does come through, it would make a very hard decision to turn down an eighty percent grant on what we're doing. So again, that conversation and that decision does come up in the future, but I just wanted to bring up that, hopefully, that eventuality that comes to pass.
Commissioners, your thoughts? Questions for Mr. Hanson? Again, he's asking that authorized letters of support, that requires, being we're amending what our request is for funding, requires these letters of support.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the authorization of letters of support as directed by Mr. Dan Hanson, city engineer for the City of West Fargo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Item number four is the 2023 Final Budget Approval, Mrs. Tina Fisk, City Administrator of the City of West Fargo, is on pages eighty-four through one forty-one in your packet.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. Included in your packet is the 2023 budget. It is the same, it has not changed from the last meeting that we had when we had our initial hearing. And so therefore, as you can see, it is approximately just under a half mil decrease overall, and we've found revenues to reduce our costs, as well as we have significant changes that need to take place for our public safety, fire and police. So what questions do you have for me?
I'll recall everyone's, in our minutes that we approved earlier in the meeting, that on our last meeting, there was a word left out when we advertised this. So this is a public hearing also for this budget. If you recall, the exact language in the minute says, Tina Fisk, City Administrator, appeared before the commission for a public hearing and review of the 2023 City of West Fargo budget. The commission agreed to continue the item on the Monday, October third, 2020, West Fargo City Commission Meeting, because there was a term, a specific word that was left out. So I am going to leave the regular agenda, and we're going to go to a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the budget? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the 2023 budget? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on the 2023 budget? The public hearing is closed, we're back in the regular agenda. Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Fisk? As we get going into fall and November election, we are also asking the citizens of West Fargo to consider a half-cent sales tax for the purpose of funding, additional funding for only the police and the fire department. That being said, we also have a responsibility to our taxpayers that we're asking for their hard-earned dollars to run our city. And I would like, Mrs. Fisk, at your discretion, and our finance director, Mrs. Oftal, to give some consideration. There are, there's been a recent discussion that we've had with our bonding agent, with Moody, with regarding to cash reserves. And our city has done an amazingly good job on cash reserves, but I don't, I don't know the details of how we do government accounting with regard to that. But I would like you and several Commissioners to take a look at that, that we continue to ask the taxpayers for dollars, and we have some surpluses, also on our special revenue fund. I think that we're carrying a pretty healthy balance there. And before we continue to ask the public for more tax dollars, I'd like to know what those balances really should be at.
Thank you, Commission President. I've actually spoke with Ms. Oftal, and she has some ideas on cash reserves, we've also talked to our auditors, and we've also talked to our bonding agent, because in the past we issued so much debt that we had to keep strong cash balances, or it would affect our bond rating. We have an extremely strong bond rating right now, and we're issuing less debt than we're retiring. And so with that in mind, it will make it easier for us to be able to, to work some of that into projects, into other things that the commission would want those funds to do. I would extend caution, you don't want to get too low, because I would hate to see our bond rating
Agreed.
go down, but we, I know that Judy has that on her list of a million things to do, that we will bring that forward to at some point here.
Very good, thank you. Any additional questions? It's your pleasure, Commissioners.
I'll make the motion to approve the final budget.
We have a motion to approve the 2023 final budget, is there a second? Is there a second? For the purpose of discussion, I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2023 final budget as presented by Mrs. Fisk, it's on pages eighty-four through one forty-one in your packet. Is there any further discussion?
Commission President?
Please.
Just so that you are all aware, if the budget is not approved tonight, we have to have it to the county by the tenth, which means it will go back to what we had levied last year.
Tenth of October. We have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, I believe John, can I, may I speak?
Certainly.
Thank you, John, I believe that when the motion failed, the prevailing party is actually the voted-down ones, and we have the opportunity to bring it back for reconsideration.
Correct.
Is that correct? So for the purpose of bringing back for reconsideration and making a motion, I would make a motion to bring it back, if I could.
Is there a second?
Does that make sense?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second, it's been moved and seconded to approve reconsideration of the 2023 final budget approval.
Okay.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is. Well, I'd like to make a motion if there's no discussion.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, Emily, get ready for this, please. I'd like to make a motion approving the budget for 2023, with the exceptions of removing, number one, the full-time employee for the communications, and I can explain these later if you want, but this is my motion. Number two, cut the fifty thousand, or the seventy thousand for marketing down to twenty thousand dollars. Number three, cut from the travel line, item three forty on communications, five thousand dollars, down from, it was like ninety-five hundred dollars. Item four, cut the twenty-five thousand dollars that, I believe we have a retainer fee for Dale Carnegie class through Human Resources, and again, I'll explain this if you want to, but I want to make the motions first. And also, cut the twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe it's online, item three oh seven, I'm not sure, for the payroll study. And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
No second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
So I'm curious why you want to cut down, cut out the Carnegie training?
Okay.
Why, why don't you want our employees to improve?
Thank you for asking that, Commissioner Olson. So when we originally set this up, and the mayor knows it was actually involved with me with this, it wasn't to send everybody employee through Dale Carnegie, it was to teach management to our department heads and assistant department heads, not a Dale Carnegie, it was supposed to be a Management One Oh One class. We're sending all of our employees through this, Commissioner Olson, not realizing the back end, I have two departments that are spending six to seven thousand dollars in overtime. We forget about that, though we still have to pay these people when we send them through. That was not the intent of this class. The intent was to send our, and I'm all for, if we can still do that, I'm for doing that, but I'm done with Dale Carnegie, that's not, it was not, I don't believe that was, I won't speak for the mayor, but that was not my intention.
It was for the department.
Commission President?
I'm going to call on our Human Resources Director, Jenna Wilm. I do not believe we're sending all of our employees, so Jenna, would you please, Mrs. Wilm, would you please clarify that?
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners, we are not sending all staff through this training, it's any individual who supervises other employees. So it's our department heads, lieutenants, sergeants, foremen, crew chief, anyone within the city who supervises staff, who's in a leadership position is who's going through this training.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilm, just wanted to clarify.
Okay, that's great, but, Mrs. Wilm, please, I'm not done yet, sorry, but Pete, how many people are going from the PD through this class, are you aware by any chance?
How many are on your?
Do you know, Jenna?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Do you know how many from the fire department?
How many sergeants do you have? Thirteen sergeants, four lieutenants, assistant chief and chief and Tracy, so twenty to twenty-five.
So I was told, in confidentiality, that we are paying thousands of dollars in overtime pay for my two departments, is that true? Do they get?
I can't attest to the overtime pay in other departments, I don't know that we're paying overtime to staff, I know the sergeants potentially, but lieutenants are exempt, assistant chief is exempt, chief is exempt, so they don't have any overtime in there, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm being told by the, this costs us a lot of money in overtime for our officers and our, and our police people.
And none of the officers are attending.
Our fire department, so that's something, regardless, Commissioner Olson, that's why I don't want to Dale Carnegie. Again, I want leadership, but Dale Carnegie, sorry, in my opinion, is not a leadership class, it's not a Management One Oh One, it's a, I'm, it's just not management, and that's why. I'm all for, for doing management, and like I said, maybe the same people Jenna talked about, but not to Dale Carnegie, that's not, that wasn't my envision of management. You know, we need to, honestly, folks, we need to teach our people management classes. All of our, all of our people are relatively new, and I don't want to embarrass and say, raise your hand, how many of you actually taken management courses, how many of you have a master's degree, how many have a bachelor's, but Dale Carnegie and management are not the same, Jenna, so don't even, you know, try to tell me they are.
I will tell you that our partnership with Dale Carnegie is formatted specifically for our leadership, to have difficult conversations with staff, to talk about recognition for staff, to learn about communication styles, so that they are able to know how their staff communicates, so they're able to build a stronger relationship and help to retain staff, develop, develop staff into where their strengths are, help them to improve their weaknesses. So it is truly the Dale Carnegie session that is one hundred percent formatted for the City of West Fargo, using the City of West Fargo values, is for leadership. There are some generic Dale Carnegie trainings out there that may not necessarily be for leadership, but ours truly is.
My point is, is I want it management, and it's, to me, it's not management, so, and you can, okay, thank you. So that's, that's my reason there.
How about on the marketing?
On the marketing one, first of all, we're covering in front of you when Commissioner George gets back, and all we're recommending and voting on is to change the logo by such a little margin that it'll all be done through attrition, we won't have to spend a nickel on even paperwork, because it's so little of the, you know, we kind of want some of the fonts, Mayor, that you liked and different things, but, but nothing that a person would be able to see if they weren't side by side, they wouldn't even notice it.
But you're talking branding, that's not marketing.
Well, that's part of marketing, the branding was the seventy thousand, we gave, two years ago, we gave thirty-five thousand for this, last year, we gave seventy thousand for this. So we already got a hundred thousand into all this, now it's another seventy, I just think twenty thousand plus whatever, I mean, there's other things at communication, Commissioner Olson, there's other money in there that they can use. So that's, so I just, yeah, that's, that's my feeling on that. And I'll just go on, I guess, if you might as well, if you don't ask a question, I will. Okay, the payroll, the payroll study, you know, we've done studies and studies and studies, we could pick up the phone and call any city in North Dakota and get their payroll, we don't have to have a consultant come in to tell us what to do, I get there's, there's advantages to it, but right now is not the, to me, when we're out there looking for a sales tax, we're looking for, you know, money for a PD and the fire, now's not the time to be wasting money either. I think we need to be prudent, I think we need to show our citizens that we are cutting, I know the staff isn't going to like any of this, I get it, but we have to show our citizens that we're cutting a little bit here, too, we're not just going with the flow. The other one, what was the other one, I think that was all of them, wasn't it? The other one was the travel pay, and that was communications again, I'm sorry, but ninety-five hundred dollars, it tripled from last year, I think, I believe it was twenty-five hundred dollars? It, it tripled from last year, I think, I believe it was twenty-five hundred dollars. Travel. Twenty-eight fifty to ninety-five hundred dollars. Anybody wants to sit down and tell me that, that sounds right? So that is my motion. And I'm not negotiating on it. So we either pass the budget or we don't. That's the bottom line here tonight.
Could you repeat your motion by line item please Commissioner?
By line, all over again?
Yes please.
Okay, so.
So we all appear.
Okay, gotcha, so, so the motion is to cut the full-time employee from communications. Cut from seventy thousand do, or seventy thousand down to twenty thousand dollars for marketing. And that's line item six oh two. Cut the travel line item three forty. To five thousand, I'm sorry, let me look at that one again now. Yeah, cut five thousand off that, that's ninety-five hundred, cut that down, five thousand off, that's communications again. Cut, cut the twenty-five thousand dollars line item two forty-five for the Dale Carnegie classes, we can most certainly.
You mean cut them out and complete?
Cut the, the Dale Carnegie, I, I, I don't believe in them, I think we need to go with a more management style, and we can do that. And cut the twenty-five thousand dollar for the payroll. So I have five, five.
Study, yeah.
The payroll study, cut that, and I don't know if that's on. It was hard for me to dis, if that's on line three oh seven Jenna, or not.
It's whatever the contract service is line item.
Okay, but you will know what it is with my motion, you'll know what I'm, my intent is, right? So.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, now, again, talking about what we have to do by October tenth. Our next, our next commission meeting is the seventeenth. So if Commissioner Simmons' vote fails. And the previous vote failed. We're not going to meet North Dakota statute by the meeting on the seventeenth. Please, Mrs. Fisk.
President Dardis, I just wanted to double check with our city attorney. And just a reminder, if the budget fails. We go back to last year's levy, which is actually higher than the one that the staff is asking for.
Could you remind me what that was, I have my budget here, I guess I have it.
Last year, it was eight, eighty-one point one five mils. We were proposing eighty point six one.
John? I'm sorry.
Commissioner, no, Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you, I understand, I guess, the, the thought process there, but. When we cut all this out, that budget. Are you saying that's what we would turn, i, if it failed, we'd turn that budget in, that doesn't mean we have to spend it. That's just the budget we're turning in. We could still go by our regular budget.
Great question Commissioner Simmons. Your mill levy would go back to what last year's mill levy was on the budget, I'd have to research the. Question about what your budgetary authority is, that's your, your mill levy author, your mill levies. You, you certainly, as the commission, have the ability to control the budget. And so I'd want to go back and look at. What, how your budget would look if you didn't approve it, we know what the mill levy would be. I think it's correct, kind of shooting off the hip here, that if. You, you wouldn't have to spend all of the money that you took in under that mill levy, but you would still be taxing at a higher rate.
Commissioner Olson.
That was my, going to be my, I wanted to clarify that. We would still collect that full amount of taxes, it, just as if right now. With the budget that's, that's been presented to us, if we pass that one. We don't have to spend all the money, but we're still going to levy that amount of taxes on the citizens no matter what. And even if, if Commissioner Simmons. Motion carries, we're going to assess a higher amount of taxes, even with your cuts. In the, in, in the budget, we'll still assess a higher amount of money.
Mayor.
Please Commissioner.
Number one, I'm not going to be held hostage by that at all. But number two. If that should fail, then everything in this budget goes away, so how do we even do the budget? We, we, yeah, we charge people the whole, but how do we, how do we give them what they want in this budget, so.
We can't.
To me, the budget has to pass. And I'm willing to, to make a motion, I just did to pass it, but I will not. Allow these items, that I, I, I will not allow these to go in there, so either.
Well, you're basically holding us hostage then.
I think if we can't afford not even two hundred thousand dollars out of a how much million dollar budget. I, I think there's something wrong, so, I, I'm, I'm very lenient here, I think, by two hundred, you know, that's not, that's not even a mill.
I understand your, your, the thought process there, I'm just. Curious as to why you don't want our, our supervisors to get better at supervising.
I, I, again, I do, I do, but I don't want Dale Carnegie. And I don't think I'm alone, I won't speak for anyone else, but I don't think I'm alone on that.
So could we leave that money in there but have a different contract?
We, you know, we most certainly can, if, if, if we can get into, I'll leave that to perhaps the mayor's discretion.
We can always amend.
We can always amend the budget.
But we can't go higher.
Right.
Than what we present to the county. On October tenth.
Mayor, so.
Commissioner.
But you just mentioned earlier that Commissioner Olson. We have reserve money, so really that twenty-five thousand doesn't mean anything here, we could take reserve money and, and pay for more management classes. Whether it be online or in person, I, I just want a, a higher definition, that's all I'm asking for, a higher, you know, a higher standard.
This discussion is positive despite that there, there's some tension up here, it really truly is.
I just wish it had been brought up sooner than the last day.
Well, that's, yeah, okay, but the fact of the matter is, is that it shows a high regard. For the dollars that we're spending of the taxpayers. And, and Commissioner Simmons, Simmons took it upon himself to identify some line items that. That he was troubled with as the, the budget process went forward. Let's be honest. Commissioner Anderson was troubled by some of the line items, Commissioner Olson was, I was, certainly Commissioner George was too. But we work under very stringent deadlines when it comes to us presenting our budget to the county. Now, if the work wasn't done prior to. The whole budget process of when we meet with the department heads. When they meet with administration, when they meet with finance and all that type of thing. I would always hope that we would vet that before we get to this evening. Because this is, as you've said, and you've said Commissioner Olson, this is very difficult. You know? Do we? Agree with some of the line item cuts that Commissioner Simmons is on? Or do we kill the whole budget and go back to nineteen twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two? And that assessed budget is higher than with the budget we're discussing this evening. So this is a, I, I would, I would probably venture to say this is a first in West Fargo city government. And it's an interesting dilemma for all of us sitting up here. Please.
You're correct, of, out of all the years I've been here, this has never happened. But I do want to mention that this is nothing new, these items I brought up have been, I have been talked about forever and ever, this is nothing new at all. To everybody out there, you know I've talked about these. So it's just that nothing was ever done, that's the problem, nothing was ever done. And I think us as commissioners have to say. This is it, we, we're not just going to go with the flow, we, we, we are allowed to make changes, whether they're good or bad. It's our decision, the city commissioners, we're the elected officials, that's our job.
President Dardis, can I say one thing?
Please.
I respect what you're saying Commissioner Simmons, but at no time was I ever told to cut the communications position. Was I told to cut training for all of our staff. Or to cut the payrolls or the salary study, I was not told to do that. And there have been months of time for people to talk about that, I just think the staff is blindsided. And that's fine, if, because it's your right to do it, but I just, I was not asked, so don't say we were asked and I didn't do it. Because if you, if the commission as a whole. Asked me to do it, I would do it, but it wasn't the whole.
Exactly, that's the key right there, this, you have been using that against us forever, that. One vote, we're only one person, not as a whole, and you just said it, I've talked to you Tina many times about these issues. I, in fact, the impression Commissioner George told me before she left, and I won't speak for her. That the full-time communications was supposed, we, she had agreed to an intern in that position. And according to your words yourself, and I'm not, we don't need to get into all this here, but. It was that. The communications director did not want an intern. That came from you Tina too, so don't, you know, we talked about it.
Yes, that is correct, because to have an intern come in in communications is too difficult. Because every single person works differently, and if you're going to have them actually subsidize extreme load of work, like. Communications, fire and police alone tie up all their time. So to have someone coming and going would not work.
And I get that, I get it, but. The impression we got it was going to be an intern, you did not come back and tell us that it was going to be a full-time person.
It's been on every list, every budget preliminary and final that has been presented to you.
Commissioners. Any further discussion? Again, we have a motion on the floor with exempting a number of, I believe, six, Mark? Six line items, are you addressed, or seven?
Five, I believe Emily, five.
Five, okay, my apologies, five line items. Ms. Hagemeister, would you please re, recount what those are? I want everybody to understand what we're doing here.
The full-time employee from communications, the seventy thousand marketing to twenty thousand, removing five thousand from communications travel. Removing the twenty-five hundred dollar retainer fee from Dale Carnegie and the payroll study, which was twenty-five hundred as well.
Twenty-five hundred or twenty-five thousand?
What's that?
Was it twenty-five thousand or twenty-five hundred?
From where?
For the last two. The.
From the, the payroll study?
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand, yeah.
And Carnegie was twenty-five thousand.
And Carnegie was twenty-five thousand.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Exactly, thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional discussion? And again. The final budget must be submitted to the county by October tenth. All in favor of the motion as presented by Commissioner Simmons signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Passes on a three to one vote, with the understanding, Commissioner, I hope you would agree with this. That as we move forward in the, in the, in the coming year. That if there are. Needs and or. Educational opportunities brought forward. We have that opportunity to amend.
Absolutely.
All right. Next order of business, item number five is an office lease agreement. Being brought forth by Dustin Scott, Assistant City Administrator at City of West Fargo. It is on pages one forty-two through one forty-seven in your packet.
Well, good evening, thank you Commissioners. So during your last meeting on September nineteenth, you had directed staff to work out. A draft lease agreement for office space at fourteen oh five Prairie Parkway. Before you this evening. Are the first five pages from that draft agreement. That are summarizing the terms and conditions. The agreement was, of course, worked on by staff and is also reviewed and edited by our city attorney. This particular space will accommodate up to thirteen staff, includes a conference room, storage, other support areas. There's parking out in the front of the building. As well as ten dedicated overnight spaces in the back that can be monitored by a security camera. And the term of the lease is for five years. The first year's rate is twelve dollars seventy-five cents a square foot plus six dollars six cents a square foot for cams. Which is very good for, for the market and that particular location. This space is move-in ready, and when I say that, that means there are zero fit-up costs. There is also no down deposit. No deposit or upfront payments required. The only items that are really needed to, to make the space ready. Would be extending a fiber utility line from Thirteenth Avenue to the building. As well as, of course, some desk furniture and miscellaneous office supplies. The estimated cost for this first year is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand. The, the rent, based on the, the rates that I mentioned previously, that first year's rent would be eighty-nine thousand dollars. And then thirty-five thousand for furniture and about eighteen thousand for the fiber line extension from Thirteenth Avenue. And then, of course, we're anticipating some other miscellaneous office supplies costs, things of that nature. Getting us to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Staff is recommending using COVID funds that we have available to finance this first year, but there are other options. Such as using sales tax and or our general fund reserves. At this point, staff is recommending to approve the lease agreement, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Mr. Scott, Commissioners. I have one, one of the things that I'm concerned about is a five-year lease. With, you know, all the things that go on at city hall and the planning that we're doing and some of the research that we're doing. I'm not comfortable with a five-year lease, Mr. Scott. Have you had any discussions with the landlord about a possible shorter term?
Yes, there, there were initial discussions for a three-year lease, I don't know the, the exact rates that they were quoting for a three-year lease, I know that they would be higher. Our concern with a three-year lease is that. Even though we have started efforts working towards a new facility of some sort, whether it be a new city hall, new police station, or. A potential complete remodel of this particular site. We are anticipating that due to the current market, just the time it takes to, to vet out all of those options, we're anticipating will take a year, if not more. And then once you are ready to design a facility, whether it be remodel or a new facility, that's going to take another year. And then, of course, construction alone, we've seen a volatile market, so. Even if we start moving and making more progress, we anticipate it'll be at least. Three to five years before we are in a new facility, so that's why staff went forward with a five-year lease. As well as the, you know, the idea that it does lower our rates. But if, if we, if you would like us to go back and ask for the three-year, certainly can do that. And I, I don't know if. If there's, if that's, if you have more specific, if, is it just the longevity, or is it a matter of how much the rate would?
Well, you know, with the, with the growth that we're experiencing and, and the like. You know, that, that facility might not be big enough in year four. And then what do we do, we're going to take another space, you know, so I think it gives us some time to. Adjust to. The space that would become available in this facility. To really analyze where we're at with what, whether or not. What the market will allow us to do and hiring people, you know, we might be, not be able to fulfill all of those positions. And if that be the case, then we've got plenty of space here.
Absolutely.
So, that's part of the process, Commissioner Simmons.
If there's no other conversation, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to, for a three-year term. Go back and talk to him about a three-year lease. Because I agree with the mayor, I think five years is too long to tie us up, there's too much going on.
I'd like to call on City Assessor Nick Lee.
Nick's been handling a lot of the negotiations back and forth, so he might know what that three-year lease would be.
We do have a out after three years built into the lease, so if we do need to get out of it, we can.
Okay.
And. While it is mostly fit up, they will be doing some minor stuff for it, for us to move in there. And they are going to eat all that cost because of the term of the lease. So as part of that three-year lease, there would be a small penalty plus, or. It's, there's a penalty, obviously, because we're breaking the lease, but we'd also have to pay the balance of that off. Which you haven't got a. I don't have a dollar amount on how much that is, but. They're working on that right now, actually.
We have a motion on the three years, we have a second?
No second.
It had been moved and seconded, so we're. It had moved and seconded, so we're going to have, is that part of that, that would have to be part of the discussion that you bring back to us, then? Is there any further discussion?
This would just be to find out what the three-year lease rate would be, right?
Yeah.
We're not approving any lease or anything.
They brought forward a five-year plan.
Right.
We are moving for a three-year plan, and so thus, we assume that there's going to be a change.
Right.
In what the rate would, you know, the square footage rate is a very conducive rate for what's going on in the marketplace today.
Right.
There's no doubt about that, that's, that's a positive thing. Mr. Scott, do you have something additional?
Yes, certainly, we'll look at getting more details on a three-year lease. One question I would ask, for still, for consideration, is to extend the fiber line from Thirteenth Avenue, that's an eighteen thousand dollar quote that we did receive, but it, as the ground starts to get cold, those things can start to increase, and so if the commission is comfortable moving forward with the concept of leasing, I would ask that we could at least acquire, hire that contractor to get that fiber line installed.
Makes all the sense in the world, but if the, if the lease rate for the three-year is not approved by the city commission, then that eighteen thousand dollar expenditure is for naught, so.
Would we not entertain the five-year lease, then, if they're three years too high?
Well, I most certainly don't think we want to tell that publicly right now, that we're going to do that, so.
No, but I just want to know.
No, we don't want to entertain it.
You're looking.
Go, I, yeah, let's just go look at the three-year lease, see what they want, right?
Do you think we can get that by?
We're having a special meeting coming up in the very near future, and that way, we'll have the commissioners together, and we could, we could have that discussion in a public setting.
Is that going to be on the agenda, though?
Yes, we'd have to put it on the agenda, though.
Okay. Emily, would you please put that on the agenda? Thank you. Done deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, got a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Number six, Mr. Scott, do you have a Assistant City Administrator's report, anything that you'd like to bring forward?
I believe there was some correspondence passed out at the beginning of the meeting, other than that, I guess I'd stand for any questions that you might have.
Commissioners? Okay. Is there any non-agenda items, Commissioners, that you'd like to bring forward? Any non-agenda items that any of our department heads would like to bring forward? And that, we have a lot of folks in the commission meeting tonight, is there anybody from the public that has something that they would like to discuss with us? Taking a, taking a chance here, nobody? Wow, sir, please.
Want to man camp, or?
That's over with.
All right, done. We've already conducted that business, but a man camp, well, there's been a discussion about a campground, yes, sir. So is there anyone that, I'm going to, I'm breaking protocol, but because we have citizens in this, in the room, I'm asking if there's anyone that would like to speak about a non-agenda item, or agenda item, for that matter. We had four of them this eve, five of them this evening. This is an opportunity. Commissioner Simmons?
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Olson?
Second.
We stand adjourned.